Good evening. I'd like to call this Douglas School Committee meeting to order for December 15th at 7:00. The Douglas Public Schools offer a diverse learning experience that meets the academic, social, and physical and emotional needs of all students. We provide a safe, supportive, and challenging learning environment in which students may achieve academic success and personal growth. Decisions are made in the best interest of students. So, I'd like to rise now for credibly allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call our student representatives, Zett Sterick and Lisa Lane, up, please.
Good evening. My name is Zachary Sterick and I'm here with Lisa Lane today. I am an eighth grade student council member and she is a seventh grader representative. The middle school has been busy this past month with academics, sports, and a bunch of school-wide activities.
The sixth graders are working hard in their academics. In G.O., they are learning about early humans and they just started about Mesopotamia. In math, they are working hard on adding and subtracting multiplication decimals. Science class have been fun for the students and they are studying rocks and minerals. In E.L.A., they are working on different types of sentences. They recently had tests on spelling. In G.O., they are learning about the history of ancient China. During science, they are learning about earthquakes. And in E.L.A., they are reading Christmas carols. And in math, they are learning about one and two-step equations.
For the eighth grade, each class is working very well in their subjects. In civics, the kids recently just started to learn about the Declaration of Independence and they recently wrote a so-called breakup letter to the king, which involved everything they had learned in their unit. And in math, we are learning about volumes of spheres, cones, and cylinders, which we had a quiz today on that and how to use it in real-life situations. And English Language Arts, students are learning about the types of figurative language and using those references to create a detailed narrative writing piece. And pronouns are being taught in Spanish class and we recently just had a quiz last Friday. For the student council, we've done a lot of events and activities that the school has enjoyed. We have a lot of stuff planned out for next week and a remainder of this week. This upcoming Friday, on December 17th, the student council is holding an eighth-grade winter dance and we hope to hold more of these dances in the future. And we have Spirit Week next week where kids can dress in many different outfits representing each day.
The entire school did a food drive and it was very successful. All of the grades combined were collected, 485 cans and boxes for hygiene products. Starting on December 20th and going until the 24th, the student council is holding an annual winter Olympic and Spirit Week. And the constant of the STEM projects such as building spaghetti and marshmallow towers. It will also have fun trivia games for students and a winter-themed sports game in the gym.
So, for sports, the boys' basketball team, they recently just had two tryouts and they will now have their full team put together. They've had several weeks of practices and they will have their first game January 4th and possibly a tournament occurring over Christmas break. And the girls' basketball team has been practicing and has their first game on January 4th.
Cheer has started up and we are very excited to start getting our sports team excited for the season. So far, they have been practicing their routines and chants and they're planning to perform a halftime show for boys and girls' basketball. Progress reports were posted on Monday. The kids did excellent. Students of the Month for November was hosted by Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Aronian. Awards were given out for academic citizen in grift in all grades and related arts families received were invited to the breakfast and ceremony.
And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays. We'd now like to open up for public comment. Please note that there's, due to our heavy schedule, we're limiting it to 15 minutes. Each individual has three minutes to do or to come forth with comments. The school committee does not provide any commentary to anyone's questions that they make during their commentary to us. Please know that if you're coming forth with, during public comment, it has to be related to public policy that we have for the school or an item on our agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to come forth for public comment? Starting with students first, please. I see you, Mr. Weirden, I will get to you. Mr. Weirden, if you'd like to come forth. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Weirden. I live on 22 Hawthorne Drive in Secauc and I am the DTA president. Two weeks ago, I sent a letter to the school committee to which I did not receive a response nor acknowledgement of receipt. So, I'm here tonight on behalf of the DTA to read that letter aloud to you. To the members of the Douglas School Committee, we are sending you this letter on behalf of the entire Douglas Teachers Association who have been working tirelessly, day in and day out, to support our community. We love working with the welcoming and friendly community here in Douglas. Many of us call Douglas our home and although there are quite a few of us who live elsewhere, Douglas feels like an extended hometown. From our perspective, it is clear that the bonds between us are what make us strong. Thinking of the soccer game before Thanksgiving, the crowd that showed up to cheer on our team in the state finals was made of staff, students, residents, alumni, and more. It was clear there, as it is every day in the buildings, that in Douglas, we all show up for each other. This sense of community and our deep bonds with fellow staff members have kept us here in Douglas through a global pandemic. The majority of our members have spent many years getting to know the people of Douglas and building connections with amazing colleagues who enable us to show up each day even when conditions are difficult. But right now, conditions in the schools are incredibly difficult. Due to the stress of the last two years, students are finding it difficult to fully engage in school. And when a student is in crisis, critical staff are pulled out of other classrooms to help defuse emergency situations because there aren't enough staff in the building. This leaves the classrooms less supported in addition to being underfunded as we continue to spend hundreds of our own dollars on school supplies to make up for what our buildings lack. Each week, more of our seasoned educators are reporting to the DTA that they are feeling exhausted and burnt out. Nationally, teachers are leaving the profession in droves and we need to act together now to make sure that students and teachers in Douglas feel supported. Every day, members are reporting that the buildings are understaffed and that there aren't enough teachers and parents in the buildings to meet every student's needs. That, combined with large class sizes and students with more needs, has created more reports of negative behaviors and outbursts. After our period of remote education, we are glad to be back in our classrooms, but every day, we need to navigate the difficult realities of that transition. In order to help the district focus on a smooth transition back to in-person work, our union took a 0% cost of living adjustment last year. We are now working with an expired contract while our bills continue to rise and national inflation approaches 6%. We continue to do the best we can without all the resources we need. In this difficult time, it is our colleagues in our community that keep us going. This is why you may have seen Douglas teachers walking into and out of our buildings together. This is why you may have seen us wearing the same colored clothes, wearing pins that ask you to respect educators, and posting signs in our classrooms and our cars. We stand united and hopeful that our school committee and administration will support us to the same extent that we support our students. For Douglas to be as successful as possible, we need to fund our schools, support all our students, adequately staff our buildings, and retain our experienced educators. However, as was recently reported by Mass Live, Douglas teachers are paid less on average than teachers in over 240 other public school districts in the state. More than ever before, educators need to be recognized for the many roles they fill each day. We are so much more than strictly teachers. We are counselors, coaches, advisors, mentors, nurses, mediators, fundraisers, tech supporters, resource specialists, entertainers, students, and parents. It is impossible for us to sufficiently fulfill all of these roles during the hours of the school day, so we volunteer valuable personal and family time on nights and weekends to make sure we provide our students with everything they need to succeed. Our nurses have had to completely redesign their daily routine and are working around the clock to fulfill their new daily obligations. You, the school committee, have said numerous times that you hear us, but we need you to show us that you value the incredible work our educators do every day. We need to see action. Veteran educators have remained in the district for many years and have experienced many changes in administration and school committee members. DTA members have endured many concessions over the past decade. Now, the union is standing together to show you that this is enough. Our staff and students deserve more. We hope you show us that you agree. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone online?
No.
Okay. I'm going to close public comment and go to old business. Any old business we need to address? Any, onto new business? The superintendent's report?
Thank you. I'm really excited to have our Division V state finalist boy soccer team here. Going to have Mr. Romano and Ms. Sokol come up in a minute to talk a little bit about our student athletes in this season, but they were the third seed going into the tournament. They finished the year with a 10, 5, and 2 record. They received a first-round bye. They beat Quayborg, Granby, Keefe, and Westport to make it to the state finals against Brumfield, where they lost in overtime, real close, 1-0. Pretty amazing. They outscored opponents 13-1 and they had three shutouts during the tournament. It was a fantastic run. I've been in education now for 27, 28 years. It's really tough to make it that far in the tournament. It doesn't happen too often. You don't see it happen. So, it's just a testament to the kids, the school, the community. What an awesome run for you guys. What a great run. I know it wasn't how we wanted it to end, but you guys should be so proud of your accomplishments. And I wanted you guys to be here in front of the school committee for them to recognize you and have Ms. Sokol and Mr. Romano talk a little bit more about your accomplishments and your season.
Ryan, you want to introduce yourself and the boys?
Yes, my name is Ryan Bonin. I'm a junior captain. This is Logan Hooper. He's a sophomore. And Colin Squire, who's a sophomore.
Good evening. Let me first say it's an honor for me to be here to talk about our fall student athletes and our coaches. Again, the fall season was an extremely successful season for athletic teams here at DHS. We had four teams representing DHS in the postseason MIA tournaments. Cross-country, coached by Jeff Thayer, were represented by All-Stars Ben Markie and Andrew Squire. Our field hockey co-op with BMR, Sarah Hamilton, earned field hockey All-Star status. Our golf team, led by Coach Kevin Reardon and John Wagenheim, finished with a record of 10 and 8. Two sophomores representing the DVC All-Star team, Andrew and William Hogan. Our volleyball team, led by Coach Greg Bernard and assistants Megan McLauysen and Brett Argle, finished the season with a record of 13 and 9. And the volleyball team made it to the Division V Elite Eight in the state. The team had Ariana Sofita selected as the Dual Valley Conference All-Star. The girls' soccer team, coached by Jared Stan and Desi Vega, finished with a record of 10 and 8 and made it to the round of 16 in Division V. All-Stars were Morgan Berthium, Olivia DeFalco, and Mackenzie Catlin. Morgan Berthium also was selected as a Central Mass All-Star and selected to the All-State Team. Our boys' soccer team, coached by Alec Ferguson, who apologizes for not being able to hear, he's at a soccer event with his son, finished the season with a record of 14, 6, and 2. The team made it to the Division V state final game. DVC All-Stars were Aiden Ferguson, Michael O'Toole, Ryan Bonin, and Christopher Dame. Aiden Ferguson was also selected as DVC Player of the Year, which is the best player in the Dual Valley Conference. He was also a member of the All-Central Mass Team, All-State Team, and he made All-New England, which is a feat that hasn't been repeated for a long time. I think we've had one other athlete, a boys' soccer player, make it that far. The winter season is off and running. The girls' basketball team, coached by Jerry Gredzian, had their first game on Monday versus Valley Tech and they lost by seven. They play tonight versus Oxford and won. Due to the lack of numbers, we only have a varsity girls' team again this year. The boys' basketball team, coached by Chad Goslin and assistant Dean Hurdle, they opened their season with a convincing win over Valley Tech on Monday night, 70 to 56, in front of a fantastic crowd here in the gym. It was really nice to see and hear the gym sounds. The JV team, led by Coach Hurdle, also won 41 to 40. Our indoor track team, coached by Jeff Thayer and Pete Manca, will be kicking off their season tomorrow night at Northridge High School. And over this past weekend, Luke Lightbound qualified for the States in hurdles at a meet at the Reggie Lewis Center. And our cheer program is up and running, coached by Jen Benoit and Mackenzie Moore, both former Douglas students. Have a solid squad of 12 and are on the sideline cheering for all home games. It's a great start to a normal season. And we're also having a co-op swim team with Grafton, where we have athletes swimming. And we have a co-op ice hockey team with Hope Dale. We have a couple athletes also playing ice hockey. So, that's a wrap-up and a...
Well, congratulations, boys.
Congratulations.
Can I get a picture with them behind you with the trophy?
Oh, absolutely. Whatever they would like to do. We'd be honored.
Mary, I feel like you should be in it.
Yeah, Mary, you're gonna be in it.
Yeah, let me take...
Mary, you've got to be in it.
Let me take it. And Josh.
Well, congratulations, boys. We're very proud of you. You can't tell we're smiling, but...
Are we smiling in masks?
All of them?
Thank you.
Sorry, he's gonna take a deep...
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Happy holidays.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
None of them are seniors, so it's a good opportunity for next year.
Oh, sweet. We just click two words and one's gone.
We like those.
But Ms. Sokol was efficient. She did number one and number two.
Yeah.
Thank you. Which is awesome. But again, what a great run and awesome for the school. I went, I was able and fortunate enough to get to a couple of games. Seats were packed. It was awesome. It was great. Teachers were there, parents were there, kids, it was...
Fan buses.
Fan buses. No pressure on boys' basketball, but we're here, they're primed for a run too, so hope we can have a repeat in February of this.
And like Mary said, it was nice to hear the sounds of the gym again.
Yes.
You know, just kind of back to normal.
Correct.
Have them in the stands, yes.
As I'm getting ready to have the talk... Good segue. Just a brief update. Obviously, people who watch the news and see things, there's a spike that we've seen at the state level since early November. The numbers have doubled. Here in Douglas, the numbers since early November have tripled. We are almost, we're slightly lower than where we were at this point last year, both at the state level and locally, but we're getting up there. Again, just want to remind people of the importance of following the safety protocols and the mitigation strategies that we have here in school and that the governor and that the Department of Public Health has put out. They work, they make sense, they allow us to stay open, they allow people to stay safe, they allow kids to stay safe, staff to stay safe. So, again, just a reminder to people, please follow those safety protocols that we have set forth in place. We had a meeting with the commissioner today. He was going to, he was supposed to issue a statement on masking after January 15th earlier this week. He's pushing that out until the first week of January because he wants to learn a little bit more about this new strand and the impact of it. So, we won't know what he's going to do until the first week of January, whether or not he's going to make it a local decision or continue with the mandate beyond the January 15th date. We still have the test and stay program. We're still doing the symptomatic testing if you're symptomatic in school. We are doing the pool testing. We did a vaccination clinic. We had about 132 people sign up for vaccines two weeks ago. Some of it was for vaccines, some of it was for booster shots. The second shot is coming up on Monday. I'll be sending something out. There's the availability for people to get a booster shot if they want to come here. We'll send that link out. The Douglas Board of Health was instrumental in helping us put that together. Again, 130 people was great. I was there for about an hour or so. A lot of families coming in with kids. The nurses were fantastic with our kids. It's at the elementary school this year. This time, I talked to the Board of Health. They're going to try to get Finn and Officer Brett to come in with a dog and walk around for a little bit. So, we're hoping that people come and take advantage of that opportunity. And I'm looking to reach out to the Board of Health probably in early February to see if we can do another round of vaccinations and booster shots. But we'll let this round go through, give everyone a little time to get through the holidays, and then ask to have that set back up again. One of the things that they require is that we have about 60 to 70 people participate and we have 130, which is awesome. So, we filled up all of our slots.
That's changing as well as the numbers go up, I think, and more people are quarantining. I think that there are, I've spoken to some people who are rethinking, you know, considering getting the vaccine sooner than later.
Correct. Even, I mean, I know just personally trying to look, talking to people getting appointments was real easy in mid-November when you were looking to get appointments. If you go on now, it's not impossible like it was back in March, but yet it takes a little bit of effort to find a time slot and a location close to your home.
Well, I thank the nurse and the Board of Health for offering the opportunity for the school to take advantage of it, so, as well as the community. That's huge.
If I could put in a request there, I was actually looking at the COVID documents on the website today. I didn't see, and I may just be blind, there is like a newer document that the nurses came out with, I think, from elementary and primary school. And it was really helpful for if your kid has these symptoms, here are your choices, A, B, C, how long you'd have to stay home depending on the choice. And I think that the most recent documents we have on there are still from 2020. So, if they could just add it to the site where it's easy to spot, because I know, I don't think I'm the only parent who puts papers.
Yeah, I do, I sent that out in a newsletter, but I'll have that updated on the website.
Yeah, it's on the website.
Thank you. Any other COVID questions? All right. Next, I'm really excited to talk about the Presidential Scholar nominee. Zofia's not here today. Josh is going to come up and talk a little bit about it. Going into the holiday season, this is exciting. We're going to acknowledge her and get some more information when she's here. But every school district is allowed to send two nominees to the Commissioner of Education. Commissioner of Education sifts through about 700 of those nominations and I believe has five that he can send forward to the...
He sends 25. He sends 20 academic, 10, yeah, 20 academic and then five from vocational programs.
So, Commissioner Riley gets to send then to the U.S. Department of Education 20 scholars for them, them to whittle it down to then get the Presidential Scholarship. So, this is a testament to Zofia and our teachers, and our community, and our parents. It's based on our academics, it's based on our co-curricula, it's based off of what she does in school and out of school and as part of the community. And just think about, if every principal nominated two people, that's 700 nominees, and she was one of 20 of the 700 nominees that were in. So, that's awesome for her. And when she comes here, we'll sing her praises again. Hopefully, we'll have some more information. They're sending her the packet for her to apply for that next step. She's going to do it, isn't she?
I'm pretty sure that she's going to do it, yeah. There's pieces that we do for her as a school, so it's not as overwhelming as it might appear when she first gets it. The, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, we did nominate two. I nominate two every year and I do want to emphasize how much work it actually is for the kids to put these together because they have to submit writing samples and I give them the application and they come up with as many things as they possibly can. There's, there's like seven spaces to enter your community service, there's seven spaces to enter your academic ward, seven spaces to enter your clubs and extracurriculars. And then there's a link under all of those where it says, put whatever else you can think of. I fill those things as much as I can. So, they really, they really work hard to put these together. And we did nominate Brendan Culkins as well. He was not selected for the next round. He could still put that on his college application, scholarship application, so it's pretty great. I don't think Zofia's gotten the packet in yet. It's not due to the U.S. Department of Ed until the end of February. At that point, they do choose 650 semifinalists and then finally, it's up to 161 Presidential Scholars. I don't know where they get that. They come from all different sort of programs. There's a, there's an arts program, for example, they get to nominate 60 kids for the program. So, they, it's so many per state. They try to spread it out over the states, but we're feeling pretty confident about Zofia's ability to compete at that level. They don't get money, they don't get anything like that. They get a pretty nifty medallion and they are recognized in Washington, D.C. So, it's a pretty, it's a pretty great thing.
Some good news, which is awesome. All right. Any questions about that?
No, good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll keep you posted and hopefully she'll have the packet by the next meeting and we can encourage her to carry it. I can't imagine that she's not going to.
Well, all of her college applications will be done, so, yeah, it's just another thing.
And finally, I'm going to have Ms. Sobuleski come up for a few minutes and just give an update on special education. We had the principals present at the past few meetings. Wanted to give Ms. Sobuleski the opportunity to come up and just give a recap on all of the work that's been happening in the department over the past four months.
All right. Good evening. So, I've been here for a little over five months now, so I appreciate the opportunity just to tell you kind of my impression so far, what I'm seeing and what we have going on in progress right now. So, our Special Ed Coordinator position was filled by Sarah St. Peter about two months ago now. She's proven to be a great asset to students and families, so I'm excited about that. She's mostly supporting the primary and elementary schools at this point and she, the teachers are reporting feeling supported by her. Morale has kind of shifted a little bit. You know, people are still working really hard, but just the fact that they're providing the feedback that they're feeling supported, I think is really great. She's also been reaching out to families, making connections with them, and she's helped some families just access some community resources even outside of the school. So, excited to have her. I know there was a big emphasis placed on co-teaching prior to my arrival, so I just wanted to make sure that I touched on that tonight. That's something that Sarah and I discuss frequently as we plan supports for educators through this year and then looking into future years. So, what we've seen so far is co-teachings at different stages, at different buildings, and different content areas, which is not completely surprising. For example, I wouldn't expect to see as much stations and small group teaching at the middle and high school levels as you would at the elementary school. So, as far as where we are right now with that, the elementary school, there's a lot of station teaching where the class is divided into two or more groups and the educators are teaching different things in the student cycle between them. There's some alternative teaching that I've seen happening there where one teacher is taking the majority of the class while someone's pulling a small group. Continuing to do some work there where it's not always the special educator pulling a small group and the general educator staying with a large group, but mixing that up so that all students have access to both teachers. At the middle and high school, I've seen some team teaching, which is kind of the ultimate goal of co-teaching, where you walk into a classroom and you're not entirely sure who the special educator is or who the general educator is if you don't know who the two teachers are. So, Mr. O'Brien and I had a really good experience on one of our co-observations recently where we left and he asked the question, if you didn't know who, who was who, would you have known who the special educator was? And I wouldn't have if I didn't know who the teachers were ahead of time. So, that was great to see and we've offered up some of those teams that are already at that stage as opportunities for other co-teaching teams to just observe their colleagues. Aside from the co-teaching, reading instruction's been a big area of focus since I came on. The elementary special educators were very quick to advocate for themselves for the need for continued just professional development in the areas of reading and just with new dyslexia guidance, making sure that they have enough tools in their toolbox to address all of the students that they're servicing. The majority of them, when I came on, already had some Orton-Gillingham training, but to give them, which is great methodology, but to give them additional tools, we've offered some training through Wilson Reading Systems. So, to date, we've had a fairly decent amount of professional development going on as far as reading instruction is concerned, mostly focusing at the earlier grade levels. So, we've had three elementary teachers and one middle school teacher who did a three-day workshop on the principles of explicit sequential and cumulative multisensory teaching with some of the Wilson curriculum. We've had two elementary school teachers participate in the foundations workshops, which is currently being used at the primary school, which is focused on the K-3 population, which can be used as like a double, double-dosing intervention program so that that can start to be carried up to the elementary school so that it's not, you get one methodology in first grade when you head to second grade. We switch things up. For the older grades, we've had two from the elementary school and one middle school participate in the Just Word... participate in the Just Words program through Wilson. That's another multisensory decoding and spelling program. And then we do have one educator from the elementary school who is accepted into the intensive Level One Wilson Reading System practicum. It's a pretty intensive practicum of 65 sessions that they need to do. They're about 90 minutes each session, and it takes about a year. So that educator has committed to doing that. So I'm excited to have, have her participating in that. At this point, I still have more special educators asking to participate in some of these workshops, so I'm going to continue to look for opportunities for them to do that. At the high school level, Ms. Pemberton is very excited that we were able to secure funding to restart their cupcake business and their no-stitch fleece blankets. So they are getting started on that. And also at the high school level, Mr. Romano and I have touched base. I've been collaborating with each other in just area districts on unified sports opportunities, just to expand upon what we're offering after school for our students with special needs. There are quite a few districts that are looking for people to partner with, so they might have some kind of unified sports teams happening, but not necessarily working with other districts. So we're going to continue to look, look at that. Right now, we're looking at, hopefully this year, a spring, spring session with basketball being our hope so that current basketball players won't be, you know, in their spring season of playing basketball. Next steps on Mr. Romano and I end would just be finalizing what a position for a unified sports coach would look like, not just for this year, but moving into the next year with the ultimate goal of trying to have one unified sports offering per sport season. And that's it. Any questions?
Do you have any vacancies that are not filled?
Say it again.
The vacancy status?
We do, we still have Para and ABA vacancies. I believe we have, we have three ABA and one Para vacancies right now.
And bus monitors.
Bus monitors. Anybody wants to be a bus monitor?
Yes.
It is the most fun part of my day sometimes, but yes, that is still, that is still available.
Thank you so much for coming.
And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going, moving to the School Committee and Subcommittee reports for accounts payable.
Are these the ones from last time? Warrants? Oh, yeah, they are. So we have warrant 22 SCHL 22 dated November 24, $21,000. Warrant 22 SCHL 22, $11,24, that was for $267.027.34. Warrant 24 SCHL 22 dated 12/19/2021. That was $544,094.06. That includes the General Fund in North Aggie. And then on 12/10, there was one for 24, sorry, it was warrant 24 SCHL 22, and that was for 92, 20, sorry, $92.92.88.
Moving on to the consent agenda for November 17th meeting minutes.
So I did notice that everything's listed as roll call vote, but we didn't do a roll call vote that night. They were all unanimous. Regular vote.
If you want to prove those as amended, I will have her make the changes.
Does anybody think anything else? I move that we accept the November 17th, 2021 School Committee meeting minutes as amended.
Motion made by Becky, looking for a second. Second by Lisa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next thing is pursuing membership with the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative.
All righty, so in this agenda item, you have three attachments. One is the article of admitting new members for the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative, a tuition comparison chart, and then the services, there'll be an assessment rate comparison charts. So essentially, collaboratives are organizations where we can pool resources with area school communities so that we can meet some of the needs of our special education students that can't be met within the district. So right now, we're not currently a member of any collaborative. Collaborative does have an annual membership fee of $4,000. However, there are ongoing savings to being part of a collaborative. Most notably would be just the tuition amount. So if you looked at the Grove School where we currently have students attending, the annual tuition rates that we pay currently are $59,111. Members pay the $46,265. With two students attending, that's, oh, you know, over a $12,000 savings. We also use them for some of our extended evaluations. So you would see on that extended evaluation rate chart, two of the typical evaluations that we have completed when a student goes for an extended evaluation would be psychological and functional behavior assessments are pretty typical. For those two, there's a $600 savings between the two of them for each student that we would have going, going out. So the financial impact of looking forward to joining a collaborative for July would be the $4,000 membership. But again, if placements remained in place, we would be having that savings of $12,000 for the students who are currently placed there. So next steps on our end would be letting the collaborative know if we do have an affirmative vote that we want to pursue membership there. They would review our information and our minutes that we sent to them, just noting that we want to join them. They would vote on it. And then if we were approved to join that collaborative, that would be effective July 1st for the next fiscal year. So if the School Committee is in agreement, I would ask that you move to seek membership to Southern Worcester County Education Collaborative. The membership fee of $4,000 to be included in the fiscal '23 budget.
Okay, so basically what you're saying to me is, to us, is that if we pay out $4,000, like, it's actually not even costing us money. We're just saving by doing this. Like, I mean-
We have to pay the $4,000 upfront-
Yeah.
By the time I pay October's tuition payments by next year, we would have recouped that, yes.
Yeah.
Does the fee change depending on how many students are attending?
The membership fee?
Yeah.
It's a flat fee.
Okay. Is there any guarantee of how long that fee stays the same? Or does it change?
Not, that was one of my questions when I researched just area collaboratives, because there are other collaboratives around us. It hasn't changed over the past three years. And the other part of joining a collaborative would be that Dr. Vera would be the winner of having to join their Board of Directors. So having that change, that annual fee, is something that the Board of Directors would have to approve. So it's not like when you're, that's essentially the difference between collaboratives and private placements, where private placements have a little more control over that. Really, this is, the public schools come together and help form the Board of Directors so that you don't anticipate as much fluctuation.
Okay.
The Board of Directors are made- Go ahead.
Sorry, no, that's fine. I was just, but there is no guarantee that-
Right.
You know, that membership fee wouldn't change.
But the Board of Directors are made up of all the superintendents of the member schools.
Okay.
How many schools are there in the collaborative, do you know?
How many schools?
So, right now, as far as in our area, I know Sutton Graft and Milbury, Northbridge, and Webster are part of Southern Worcester County.
And I believe Southbridge too, isn't it?
Say it again.
Southbridge as well?
Yeah.
Used to be.
Southbridge, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, it used to be, because when I was a businessman, we always were, yeah.
It's not, it wasn't listed the last time I looked, but that doesn't mean that something just wasn't updated.
I think it's on the bottom of the page here, bottom of the last page. I counted 14.
So- I don't know enough about Grove Schools, but like, is that something where we can encourage people to go to versus some other place? Or am I saying this correctly? I don't know if I'm saying this right.
So, no, no, that's a good question. So the collaborative itself, all of those programs are part of that. So the Grove School, they have an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school. So if they have the services that a student would need, that we needed them to be in a collaborative setting, it's ideal to have your students in the same collaborative if their needs can be met there. Obviously, that makes it less restrictive because they have access to their community-based peers.
So like, for example, what is it, are we a Grove School?
Nope, so these are all schools within the collaborative. So these schools are out-of-district schools.
Oh, okay.
A membership lasts for a year? And then, and then we're up for renewal each year?
Got it.
Okay. When it comes to students attending, the students in the collaborative, like in the first paragraph here, we have better educate their students with low incidence disabilities or with a particular special education needs that cannot be met within the district. Is this going to change in any way the input of the parents on a team as to where their child is placed? So is being a member going to, in any way, increase our likelihood to say, well, let's use the collaborative instead of the classroom in the Douglas Building? Like, this shouldn't impact, we're not trying to send any-
We're not trying to increase the amount of students who go out of district.
On decisions about placement.
No.
Okay.
I'll keep my least dist- You want to go lead? Yeah.
Yeah, if you could talk about that a little bit, like how this, how this helps with placement.
Yeah, absolutely. So essentially, this wouldn't come into play for any student receiving special education services unless a team determined that their needs couldn't be met within district. So it wouldn't be, oh, this is a nice option, let's pursue it. This is, the students' needs are already above and beyond what we feel we can provide within the public school setting, that it would be time to, you know, consider alternatives. Typically like to look for collaboratives first for the, you know, the obvious reasons, like we mentioned of just superintendents or acting board members. There's more local input versus a private entity that you don't have a lot of back-and-forth engagement with, so it is less restrictive. That being said, it doesn't mean that every time a student goes out of district that they would end up going to the collaborative that you're a member of.
Do you happen to know offhand how many of these programs are based in a public school setting?
So I believe for Southern Worcester County, they might have a classroom. Actually, I don't think they do now.
Okay.
No, they did have an AU classroom, but I don't believe they do at this time.
So it's not like we're taking a kid from Douglas that we can't help out, and we're sending them to like Uxbridge Public School?
Nope. These are out of, it's all out of district, yeah.
Is it one building or is it multiple locations?
So mostly one location, so they have two different locations. They're smaller buildings, small schools.
Okay. But again, if they're collaborative, if the, what the service is here on the flip side of being placed within the district buildings, the flip side of that, if the service is here can't meet the need, like specified need of a student, we're not locked into students only attending here?
No, we could never do that. No, no, no. Yeah. Yep, no, we would have to, have to look for multiple places and then determine what's the most appropriate.
The private school places are still an option even if we-
Absolutely. Yep.
All right.
And so are other collaboratives, quite honestly.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, you're not locked into just one.
Oh, good to know.
And actually, the, we have sent students, the only difference is that it would cost less being part of the, being part of the- No, 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 I'm not, I'm not-
No, no, you should have just come up here. That's the win, right?
Right. Oh, no, because we have been sending students. It's just the only thing is, and I'll be honest with you, we, that's why I brought up Southbridge, and I guess they still are in it, because like she said, there's a lot of school districts in it. And we were, when I was in Southbridge, they were part of that. And when, I've been here almost 11 years, and I always wondered why we weren't part of this. And I asked it a number of times, I don't, so, because there is a savings. It doesn't change anything on the special ed end or the team end or the determination end, but, but there is a savings and other things that they offer as well, that you have the opportunity to save funding.
Correct. So I've had to contract, just with hiring, I've had to contract out quite a few-
Yeah.
Times this year and constantly playing the number game of who I can get for what. It would be ideal to have a go-to collaborative to help out.
Yeah, it's just member versus non-member. It's kind of like FREC, we get some French River Educational Collaborative as well. We belong to that. That has the procurement aspect, but it also offers other things too as far as, you know, courses and PD and things of that nature that we save money on. So we belong to Tech Collaborative as well, that the school lunch program accesses. You know, it has a membership fee, but you have a great opportunity of saving, saving funds.
What are the, you know, why would people not be a member? Why would districts not be a member?
I'm not, honestly, I can't answer that unless districts are thinking they might not need out-of-district services.
Or their needs are low.
Most districts belong to a collaborative.
Yeah.
If anyone else doesn't have any questions, I'd be looking for a motion.
Move to seek membership to the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. The membership fee of $4,000 will be included in the fiscal year 2023 budget.
Motion made, I'll be looking for a second. Right, Julie?
Second.
Second by Lisa, all those in favor?
Aye.
If it's okay with the committee, I know we have the DESPER contract, but Ms. Soboleski is going to be presenting on two policies. So to have her not go up and down, is it okay if we just take that out of order quickly?
Greatly appreciated, okay.
Go on, roll.
Thanks, yeah. So the next agenda item that I'll go over then is that JKAA policy revision. That's our policy related to the physical restraint of students. You have quite a few attachments just to look through. I included the current JKAA policy. When you look at that, you'll notice the current policy is only a couple of pages long. And then the next attachment is the revised copy. It is quite lengthy, and those changes are coming from our continual improvement monitoring plan that came out of our last tiered focus monitoring report that the district received last March, just noting that we were only partially implementing our Civil Rights 17A responsibilities through this policy. It was specifically noted that a review of our documents indicated that the district's written restraint prevention and behavior support procedures aren't consistent with 603 CMR 46 regarding appropriate responses to student behavior that may require immediate intervention. So that was the finding last year. Going back to 2012, there is another report that we didn't have all of the elements in this policy. So everything has been updated. Our TFM coach has reviewed this. DASI has already approved this as compliant and ready to seek School Committee approval. It includes when we would need to restrain a student, but also what we should be doing in the district to prevent it, what training is required for people who are going to be acting as resources in these times, as well as what, what practices are prohibited.
As a reminder, all new policy requires three different readings. So this is the first reading. We'll do this again at our next two meetings to have people have additional input and time to process.
Can I ask you a question you might not have the answer to? If, if this is required, why don't they just give us the policy? Why isn't it just, like, the parents have procedural rights? Like, isn't that just statewide and everybody has exactly the same one? Because I feel like we talked about this a year or two ago, too. So, do we know?
Honestly, I don't. What I do know is our next policy that we, that we're going to review, we were one of the first districts that had to redo it.
Yeah.
So I blasted it out to every spec director in the state of just, this is what I came up with. DASI said it was good, have at it, it's all yours if you want it.
Okay.
But yes, I agree.
It's a good question.
It's good to hear.
Like, I'm going to tell you what you need to say, but we're not going to-
The only thing that's really differentiated to us in Douglas would just be we use CPI versus safety care as our non-violent, like crisis intervention. So there are some things that are specific to that, but otherwise, it's essentially the language from those regs.
If there was an emergency, like, let's say a few weeks ago, there was, obviously, there was this, I hate to bring up this, I hate to talk about this stuff publicly, but like if there was a really bad thing that happened at the school
Yeah.
and like it involved kids that really like, they don't, they really couldn't do things on their own, and like basically they had to take cover, they had to do something like, does this policy at that time, is that like by the book? Or like if a teacher is like, oh my God, there's an emergency, I got to protect you, and this person's like frozen, they don't know what to do because obviously that's going to happen. Is there exceptions, like in those situations?
Yep, so yes, yep, as far as when a, when a
When there's like...
When a staff member could put their hands on a student or something other than a restraint, yes, absolutely. So as a part of the policy, there is a statement that says, you know, nothing in this policy... Let me see if I can find it for you. Nothing in this policy will be construed to limit the protections afforded, blah, including that, let's see. Nothing in the policy precludes any teacher, employer, agent of the public education program from using reasonable force to protect students, other persons themselves.
Just wondering.
No, good question. And that's the same thing as far as like students who need certain things for mobility throughout those days, like if you're strapping a student into a wheelchair, if a student has a buckle buddy on a bus, those things aren't considered a restraint. I know it's lengthy, are there questions on any of them?
I'm sure it's been reviewed by lawyers and such.
Okay, so then the motion would be moved to approve this after the third reading.
Correct, so at that third reading, we'll do the motion at the third reading.
We've got some reading to do.
So moving on to the next policy is the JB policy revision for equal educational opportunities. This was another policy that was in partial implementation on our last tiered focus monitoring report. Essentially, all public schools now need to have some form of institutional self-evaluation to make sure that all students have equal access to all educational opportunities. This policy itself isn't lengthy, so the first attachment is the current policy. The second attachment is the revised policy, which is just the addition of that paragraph five in there. And then the rest of the attachments are just procedures for the district. So that paragraph five is just that we'll evaluate all aspects of our K-12 programs annually to ensure that all students, regardless of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, limited English proficiency, sexual orientation, disability or housing status, have equal access to all, all programs, including athletics, excuse me, and other extracurricular activities. Everything else that's attached after that are just the process that we would follow as our own procedure. Again, this would be the first reading of this, and then after the third reading, we'd be looking at motion to approve.
So the only thing that I see, the one that she just had us highlight, is the K's in a lowercase, should be an uppercase for K through 12. Get the annoying thing. Because on the first page, John, number two, it's got K through 12, K is capitalized.
In the actual policy, some of the ones we just, one is December...
Yeah, the revision. Yeah, the revision one.
Oh, okay.
I see, yeah.
Yeah, now I see, yeah.
Yep, just because you drew our attention, sorry.
Oh, no, no. That's why we... That's why we have the readings.
We have some homework to do, but thank you. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Okay, approval of the agreement between the Douglas Educational Support Professionals Association and the school committee, August 30th, 2021 to August 29th, 2024.
So, so first off, just thank you to Ms. Moore and Ms. Brown, who served on the committee. This is our third contract that you're approving. We did the custodians earlier this year, we did the cafeteria workers, and now these are for our paras professionals and our ABAs. I know some of them are watching tonight. What was great about this is it was a great collaborative process, but unlike what we did for the cafeteria workers and for the custodians, we did this entire contract from scratch. They didn't have a contract, one did not exist, so we worked collaboratively with the paraprofessionals, the ABAs and school committee in order to put this contract together. So we're really pleased with the work that they did. They were great partners with us in this. Then we were able to do it in six meetings, which is awesome. I think before, you have about 30 articles and about 15 pages. I know Ms. Keegan will give a, some highlights for the committee and for the community, and then hopefully we can approve it, but just again, just thrilled to be able to put this together for our paraprofessionals and for our ABAs, and it was just a good, solid collaborative process to write that document. What, Ms. Keegan?
Yeah. So I'm going to give you some of the financial highlights. So as Dr. Vera said, you know, brand new. So as far as the FY 2022, those are newly established rates. And one of the things we were keeping in mind, especially if you look at the non-degree para, is the minimum wage rate. Now, by law, we're not required to comply with the minimum wage, but certainly if you want to obtain and retain anybody at all, let alone anybody, right? So that's one of the things that we have been working on as well. And as you can see at the appendix A, after the first year rate, it's 1.50 in FY 23 for COLA and 1.50 in FY 24 for COLA. One of the things we also did is previously, they had three steps. We did add one step, an additional step, they have four steps, and we did add one other holiday as far as financial impact, the, the largest items. So we did, as you do know, in the FY 22 budget, we did incorporate some funding in there because we knew that we were going to be negotiating four contracts. But this is a bigger hit year, the FY 22, and it would be, and we knew that this was coming, so it was not, you know, we just didn't know how much, but $87,000 additional because of the, we have the additional step and one holiday than what we already had budgeted in there for, you know, for the year. So after that, it's, it's a much lower hit. It would be around $31,000 in FY 23 and $41,400 in FY 24. And again, that's more of a function of the additional step going forward, depending on where people are. So again, to, because in FY 22, we only had the three steps and currently have the three steps, and it's going to be retroactive, anybody on step three, which is a good, good number of them, are going to be paid in that, that, go up an additional step to the step four. So again, I want to reiterate what Dr. Vera said about the process, and as you know, we did have this on for the last, the last meeting to approve, but we did find an error in there, but you know, it was, it was, it was great, you know, we contacted them and we quickly, quickly figured it out, worked it out, it came down, got it signed immediately, and so we were able to present it to you this evening, and we will be paying them, if it is so approved by the school committee, I shouldn't assume, we will be paying them the retroactive as soon as possible, probably on the next payroll.
And just to note, the same thing that happened with our cafeteria workers and our paraprofessional step one, we're making less than minimum wage. We had to get them at least two minimum wage. That, that's why when we voted on the cafeteria, there was that bump in that increase. The same thing's relevant here because we had to get that step one to minimum wage, and then that cascaded down through all the other four steps.
Do we know off the top of our heads what the step one para non-degree wage was prior to this? Like what it currently is?
Para non-degree, okay, let me look here, make sure I have the right one. 1302, step one.
And then what about step one ABA non-degree?
$15.
Okay. I just want to get a sense of the bump that they're getting with this.
Yeah, so essentially, it really isn't the first year that you're, you're, we're taking the hit, but then of course it definitely levels off after that.
Right.
Any other questions?
If there's a snow day, do they get paid?
Oh, you're testing?
No, we didn't, yeah, no, we didn't have that in the, basically that's up to, let's say, at the discretion of the superintendent, yeah. Yeah, we wouldn't want to put that in a, in a contract. That was, you know, it came up, but...
I just couldn't tell because there was a, there was a blurb about if like there was an inclement weather, like a school delay or something like that.
Typically, they get paid for, you know, the days that they work. It's like a school year employee, so a lot of times if, if making up the day at the end of the year, they're going to get paid then, even though they're staying at home, you know, so depending on the number of days, yeah.
So the thing that, I just had to read and refresh my memory, what was, what came up in contract negotiations was if we do a delayed start or if we send people home early, it's at the discretion of the superintendent to either pay them for the full six-hour day or whatever the exact amount, or for only the four hours that they work.
I see it, if you want me to read it.
On page 13, Article 20, under wages.
But I also noticed it includes honorariums too, which is really nice.
Yep.
Oh, that was actually, they're the same honorariums. Thank you for bringing that up. That hasn't changed.
That hasn't changed.
That was the same as they were receiving before.
Okay.
I'm glad they get them.
Yes.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, the, the union dues are only deducted if the employee signs an authorization to allow that to happen?
I'm sorry?
The union dues, they're only deducted from an employee if they have elected to
Oh, absolutely.
Part of the union.
Absolutely, yep.
And then I was also wondering, is this precedent for future contracts that you may have to write from scratch, you know, going forward?
Oh, no, 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 you start with, this is, it's only the first one.
This is, but like the...
You do from scratch.
The process behind it, I guess, is that...
I hope we never have to do another contract from scratch again.
We have everybody covered. Okay, everybody's covered in a district right now.
Yeah.
One way or another, they're under some type of union contract.
Oh, no, we have, we have staff that aren't. Because it's hard to, it's hard to hear through these, these things, but we do have some, a few staff that aren't covered by contracts, but...
Is there a president to this union, too?
There is a, there is a president, it's, the co-president's Jocelyn Huff and John Appelquinn. John Appelquinn. I think there's only one position they didn't have filled.
And I can't remember the name of the...
And then the, I think they have...
Because I can't read the, the thing either, yeah.
I can't read it either.
Ah, darn, and I can't think of it, yeah.
Yeah, three positions filled, three of the four positions filled.
Yeah.
Is there compensation for them in that role?
Oh, no, no, that has nothing to do with us at all.
No?
No, no, no.
That has to do with the MTA.
Yeah, that's outside of us, yeah.
Any other further questions? Looking for a motion?
I move that we approve the contract between the Douglas Educational Support Paraprofessionals Association, sorry, Professionals Association and Douglas School Committee for August 30th, 2021 through August 29th, 2024.
Motion made by Becky, looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, for your work on that. That's really awesome.
Okay, now turning it over...
Ms. Huff isn't watching, I just sent her a congratulatory text.
Yeah. Okay.
Turning it over now for the school business and operations managers report.
Okay, thank you very much. First this evening, I have for you some reclassifications. Most of them, if not, yeah, all but one are payroll, number of them moving from, with regard to grants, sometimes you don't have enough in a grant, so you just have to shift it over into another year or into another grant. And so it's just basically some cleanup there. And the salary one, the library salary one, that was a program code issue. It used to be a one and now it's eight, an eight, but they're both still in there, so we got put in the one instead of the, instead of the eight.
I was looking at it for a little while on my phone, and I was like, what is different?
Yeah, what's the difference? I know.
I finally spotted the eight.
Yeah, do you see it? Yeah, the one is, is, is regular ed, and eight is, is basically undesignedated, and the librarian role is undesignedated. Undistributed, I should say, undistributed is the right word. So does anyone have any questions?
Looking for a motion?
I move that we approve the Douglas Public Schools fiscal year 2022 reclassifications number two, school committee meeting December 15th, 2021.
Motion made by Becky, looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome, thank you.
Before we dive into this piece, I just want to offer Ms. Keegan some kudos. This has been, from a budget standpoint, a very difficult fall for her. Business managers like things clean. And it's easy when you have all your contracts in place and you can encumber your money in September or October, and you know it's encumbered and you know, especially with salaries making up about 85% of the budget, it's easy to encumber that money and see what you have left. We didn't finish our custodians and our cafeteria workers until September. We just finalized our paraprofessionals and ABAs today, and we're still in the process with DTA. So, so working with a lot of unknowns, it's been really difficult to put this together. So I just wanted to give her some kudos before she started this presentation. As you know, anyone who works with numbers, you like things clean and you like a lot of knowns, and variables are not good in...
That's me and G.
In, in the world of numbers. So I just want to say thank you, Courtney.
Thank you, and that's a good segue, too, because now we're going to move into the general fund report. So you'll see it looks different. So what I decided to do, in light of, so, and I had done this years back, so basically I dumped Munis into Excel. So the first, two, three, four, six columns are the Munis report, okay, dated as of, I guess, December 13th. So that's what you would see if I just printed out that report and just gave it to you, okay? Then I added the columns projections through June 30th, 2022, and then I did the over-under calculation. So as you follow it through, you'll see that for district-wide, primary, elementary, middle and high school, and at the very end, which we'll get to, is the overall district-wide and then the transportation. So I just want you to know that when you see the number at the end, although you probably already did, it is a lower number that you typically see, that we would expect for year end, but keeping in mind, of course, I'm going to, I'm going to project expenditures as much as, is, you know, go over, you don't want to underestimate expenditures. So we did, as you know, we did incorporate an amount, in the FY 22 budget, for everyone to get, you know, a certain amount of COLA, okay? And we're still going, you know, through that process with, with one more unit. So, but I did, I have to admit, I did assume, with a para ABA, I did base the projections on that, and I did that throughout. So every single line, individual line with the paras and ABAs in there, I actually had the salary master all done, so we have the calculation with the new rate, and that total is in that projection column, just so that you know, okay, that it's already been incorporated in there. Trying to think of what else. Far as general fund, just going to flip through, because it's hard to see with the mask on, I can't see without my glasses, so. And as you see mine, as you know, in the available budget column, you know that after, I will be bringing more transfers to you to move money around. It's really the overall bottom line that really, really counts. You know, for some new hires that we had, we had some savings. There was one position that we actually, it ended up being more, you know, like the technology director than we had budgeted. Some we had savings, sometimes because of the amount of the salary, sometimes because they started so late, it was a vacancy savings, so that's all been incorporated in here. I do assume that all textbooks and instructional materials will be spent, everything that they budgeted will be spent. I never make an assumption on behalf of any principal, you know, that I assume, you know, that even though we do expect that a lot of those materials, of course, would be purchased in the beginning of the school year, to be used throughout the school year, there may be some, some unknowns or things that I'm not aware of, that there might be a reason why they're holding it. And sometimes they end up having to do that because something unexpectedly came up, and they, they realize they have to transfer that money later on, because that would be the principal that would be covering those lines. I do have the additional time for the elementary nurse, different hours for the COVID in here as, as well, not in the grant, right now it's in here, because we did not have the grant at the time. I did add in here some additional tuitions that Tara did let me know about. We don't have the contract signed yet, but she did know the amount, so I didn't want to understate. I did include that in here as well, even though the purchase order has not been done yet. And she does have possible savings coming up. I don't have that included in here because we don't know exactly what that is. Again, when it comes to expenditures, you absolutely do not want to underestimate under any circumstances, so. under any circumstances. So, um, with regard to all of the DTA staff, basically, remember, you know, we do have an amount in that first line. And as far as all of the alliance throughout the budget, I just have them at where they are now. They did move up their staff. That has always been incorporated in there. Um, let's see if there's anything else. Of course, custodians were updated. They're paid out of the general fund. All of the admin, everybody else that you did vote on, secretaries and everyone is incorporated in here. And that's in the projections column. Trying to think if there is anything else. Middle school. So you can see, you know, and I don't know if you've had a real, and I do apologize that we did get this out too late. You may not have had time to really look at it. But if you certainly have any questions after you've had time to look, do not hesitate to email me or call me. Be happy to answer any questions that you have that come up later on. Um, so I do have it by school, but the most important number is at the very end, thirteen of thirteen, the overall district-wide. Now, again, that over-under coming down to one hundred and eleven thousand, five sixty-nine eighty-nine at this point in time for projections, you do know that typically we do have more than that left over at the end of the year. But I am, you know, projecting out as best I can. So what I'm trying to say to you, long-winded as it has been, is I feel very good. I'm very glad I actually went through this process the way I did this time because as he said, the way the year's been, beginning it seemed daunting, how am I going, and I decide I'm going to do what I, I did, actually in Southbridge, I used to do this. And I haven't done that actually since. So I dumped it in Excel. It actually, it took me a long time to do, but it was well worth it. I feel much, much better right now about where we stand. Transportation, we, we should be all set there as well. Um, projecting out everything. In other words, sped transportation, we do have more money in there than we have, um, encumbered at this point, but you never know who might move in. So again, I projected out that we would be spending all of that throughout the end of the year. So does anyone have any questions on general fund at this time?
In two sentences, what's our take-home from this document? What should we know about the general fund right now?
I like to qualify in two sentences.
What I just said, in two sentences, I feel good about with one hundred and eleven thousand.
Your point.
We are in the black. We might have more than that at the end of the year.
Lovely.
But, you know, that's, that's what I just said. Yep.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
But I like to go, not everybody is familiar with, you know, if somebody's new, I go through the process and everything.
I think that's super helpful.
Yep.
I just like
Yeah, can I ask a question? And if this is inappropriate, then just cut me off, okay? Please. Um, when, there was a speaker that came up earlier today. They were talking about how we should be hiring more. The way I heard it is that we should be hiring more teachers. If somebody goes out of district, you can get paid more money. So people can go out of district, get paid more money. But there's a need to hire more teachers here is what it sounded like. So will this, can we hire more teachers based on this budget right now? If there's like a need that we need to be adding more teachers to help with whatever's going on?
First of all, as far as if you're, you're asking me with regard to the financial aspect.
Yes.
I mean, until, you know, Dr. Vera, you know, if, if, if he determined as the superintendent of schools that he needed something, after talking with the principals who are working with and are responsible for their schools, you know, then we would have a discussion. But other than that.
I'm not going to comment on what was said in public speak. All I know is that we meet two to three times a month with principals, the director of special education. We meet with facilities once a week. We meet tech once a week. We meet with food services once a week. That's formal setting, plus all the informal meetings that we have. We've, I've had, obviously, people, if I said, we can give everyone twenty new staff members, people would gladly find if we had the money for twenty new staff members. Right now, based off of my conversations with principals, directors, and people on the leadership team, we have the staffing that we need to adequately run the schools.
And there's just not
It would be great if we, obviously, it would be great to hire a guidance counselor. It'd be great to not have Mr. Aronian split between two buildings. There'd be a lot of great things to have, but right now, we have what we need in the school system.
Okay, the next report that I have for you is, I have the school choice and the circuit breaker. Um, so if you look at the FY22 projections, we did carry over a balance of two-point-two million. And, um, the revenue that we expect to receive this year, I have, I do have it conservative at seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, three sixty-nine. We might be receiving a little bit less at the end, very end of the year with regard to special ed increment. And I also, I remove all the twelfth graders, but I do not count any new ones coming in. Okay, again, I'm being very conservative with regard to revenue. We do have currently, as part of our general fund budget, our overall operating budget process, last April, we did, um, commit one million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirteen thousand to our overall operating budget from school choice. That's in here as well. So, um, you know, I don't see anything that should, we definitely have had some things that have come up this year, but I don't feel that, we've had pluses and minuses on both sides. I don't feel that that's really going to change much. And so I do, I am showing a fund balance ending of one million, five twenty-seven eight-ten at this time. This is, is an estimate. Obviously, if you compare that to what we carried over the beginning of this year, that is something for us to be looking at very carefully going into the FY23 and FY24 budget process. But we knew that when we had the discussions, you know, earlier on. With the sped circuit breaker fund, we carried over a fund balance of three hundred and thirty thousand, four twenty-five. Um, we do have, I did receive some information from DEFC that we should be receiving fifty-two thousand, one ninety-five in sped transportation reimbursement. I did not include this, and that's why you don't recall hearing anything about it, because being very prudently conservative with revenue, it was a brand-new thing. They had no idea what money they would have. We had no idea what it was going to be. So I said, I'm certainly not going to go to the school committee or the superintendent and say, oh, I have this number I'm going to make up. So the good thing about it is, we might be, we'll probably be taking a little bit of a hit on our revenues, um, towards the end of the year, but that's less than that reimbursement for sped transportation that we will be receiving. So that's a good thing. But our fund balance ending, projected right now at five hundred and forty-six thousand, eight forty-eight. Um, so that, if you, if you look back, you know, in, in previous years, that has come down as well. Now, that's a function, just remember as well, that is also a function of the fact of the, and I don't know, this might be new to you. So when we file for the, the specialized circuit breaker reimbursement, next year's reimbursement is based on this year's expenditures. And last year, we had two, um, large, large tuitions age out. So the following year's reimbursement went, went down quite a bit. So it's a function of that. Not necessarily because we are utilizing it too much or anything like that. Sometimes it's just a matter of students aging out. So just something for us to keep an eye on. And I did put the data down there. We did get it as of, in September from DEFC. The figures that you have at the bottom there regarding the eligibility, eligible students in the calculation coming to the reimbursement is actually there for you as well. Does anyone have any questions on either, um, school choice or circuit breaker?
Can you tell me why the, maybe you already said this, I'm sorry. Why the contingency for unanticipated tuitions and paras was zero for twenty-one and twenty-two and it was not zero in previous years?
Oh, oh, no, it's not, it's not for par, it's just, it's, oh, okay, for tuitions and paras. It's for anything that's speculated. Excellent question. I was going to, to say that when I, when I was presenting this. So the reason why is because the balance has gotten so low.
Okay.
That's really why. So the reason that I had this, I actually stole this document from another business manager, but he had this line in here. So it's good to just keep a contingency in mind for funds like this, particularly the circuit breaker. And so we came up with that amount and then we were incorporating that in this document. It's good for, for discussion purposes that when you're allocating funds to the budget, you want to keep the contingency in mind. But to be honest with you, um, in FY21 and 22, we brought it down to such an amount that that kind of
You can't have the contingency.
We really, we'd be left with, you know what I'm saying? So, but excellent question. Thank you for asking.
Are we hoping to reestablish the contingency, contingency amount in the future or does it?
Well, it really is based on really what we have in there. And that's based on the students and the amount of their tuition and also our utilization of it, not only for offsetting our general fund operating budget when we're going through the budget season, but also sometimes we end up needing to use it, you know, for move-ins, but depending on that, and which is what it's for, but depending on the dollar amount.
Right.
So it just ended up being the last couple of years. This is kind of, it just seemed like it would be silly to put in
Right.
An amount, because really it should be back where it was. It really should be.
Okay.
You know, ideally, I should say. Okay, the next one that I have is the preschool. We have two programs that I always, always report on, the preschool program and the school lunch program. And I also offer the historical trend for those two programs. So we are looking very well with both of them. The main factor here, the main factors here, is you will see those tuition payments have rebounded after our bad COVID, you know. We had the, the end of FY20 and all of FY21. So I think it's rebounding very well, although we're still dealing with some COVID. So there may be some parents that are still a little bit reluctant or whatever. I don't know. But it's definitely looking very well. Expenditures, and if you go down, we're actually revenue over expenditures, which is good, just over six thousand dollars predicted, as far as just revenue over expenditures. But ending fund balance is predicted to be just over sixty-seven thousand. So that is, is very good. And you'll see that pre-COVID, we had, we had, for the last two years, right before COVID, fifty-eight students were at fifty-one right now. So it might just take a little bit more time to kind of rebound, because as you know, she did, Mrs. So she did a tremendous amount of work in, in, you know, expanding the program, which the parents love as well. So I don't see that, once we get past the COVID situation, I'm hoping soon, that that'll rebound even more.
These are all separate balances. Is that right?
Okay, so, yeah, I'm sorry, Monique. Yeah. So this, 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 so the top part is the revolving fund. So actually, this whole sheet is the preschool program and all of the funding sources that, that do pay for the preschool program. So the whole top part is just the revolving fund and that's just the fees, the tuition fees. Okay? So down at the bottom, I also incorporate funding from the general fund, the dollar amount. And also, we have a very small grant that we pay for part of, an ABA, from the two-six-two grant that we get every year. And then I show at the very, very bottom, the total program cost from all funding sources, just to have an idea of the total cost and where the funding sources are to fund our preschool program.
So when you talk about the fund balance, that's after paying out everything that we have to pay out for that?
No, fund balance is only for our, our fund, the revolving fund, the revolving fund, which pays, which is a predominant, um, funding source.
But I think the question you're asking is, at the end of FY22, after salaries are paid for, after expenses are paid for, after the program's paid for, the preschool, the fund balance?
Only, only, only for the revolving.
Only for the revolving.
Only for the revolving fund.
Like, it's a balance of money that we can decide, you know, is there something that we want to deliver in the school systems? Like, you know, we had the after-school program coming. We need money to fund that.
Oh, no, no, this can only be used for preschool.
Preschool.
Only preschool.
So how about a preschool program, something, you know, extra to help the preschool program grow? You know, if we, if we have something that we have to spend money on to do that, this would be where that money would be taken.
Oh, we would, we would normally never have any money here. We, we, in other words, it's, it, we're, we're doing well that we're, we're meeting our, our revenue of expenditures. But that fund balance is far lower than what we, what we've had before.
Right. I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of, how far away are we from the buffer? You know, everybody wants to leave a little bit in the checking account so they don't go in the red. So how far away are we from that? Are we at the minimum buffer? You know, is there room to, to be able to think about, you know, growth and?
I think it depends because
Yeah, I have to look at all funding sources.
And it depends what kind of growth you're talking about. Like, if, if Cindy were to say to us, like, there's a huge influx of students, we really want to add an additional full day and we have a space for it and whatever, but you're looking at an additional full-time teacher, sixty-seven thousand dollars is only going to get you so far with one teacher's salary. So like, yeah, but it depend, you know, I think it depends on what.
Right. So I guess, you know, after considering the needs and knowing that we are meeting all the needs that we, the bare minimum, you know, the bare minimum needs to keep the school functioning, to keep the program functioning.
Mm-hmm.
You know, getting a sense of what we have available to create stuff, you know, to, to grow, to build great things in the school system.
Yeah, but it can only be for the preschool.
That's the budget that there's the opportunity.
Well, I'm not, I'm talking about that in general because you have, you know, the one hundred and eleven thousand dollars after we looked at this form. You know, you said, I'm in the black. Well, how far in the black, you know, are we? Is my question, you know, that's, like, is this where we want to stay? Do we want to keep this amount of money for the next, at the end of the next several years?
No, general, general fund closes out.
So, like, back at this document here.
Uh-huh, that's the general fund.
Okay. So, you know, you were talking about how you were feeling really good about where we were at and so
Yeah, so we don't go in the red. Yeah.
Right.
We can't.
So I'm thinking, okay, you know, how, how good are we doing here? Can we, you know, is there room for expenditure on things that are nice to have in the school system for our students, you know?
Oh, okay. So I, I kind of know where she's going. So, so, okay, it's not just the, the general fund. It's really, the two main things, because we're always having things happen to us in the school district.
Yep.
Like the big oil tank thing. You know, the oil tank, the primary school, we've had, you know, a number of things that have happened. We have spent a lot of money on repairs. We've got the, primary school is very old. We've got the high school that's getting old. So we're spending more and more and more having to replace things, not just minor repairs. So, so from my point of view, especially at this juncture, we're only in December, I need to get us through the end of the year. So this is based on where we are now. I didn't put in here, nor would I, because I can't just make things up. You know, that's why I'm just glad that we've got funds available.
So if the grease
You know, so if something happens, you know, that we can cover it. Because we just can't turn around, school district can't turn around and has to tell the town, well, we need this fixed, we need the money. They're going to say, well, you know, you should be kind of overall planning for that. So usually, you, you, so let me see if I can give you a good example. And I, I hope this is kind of where you're going. So I do talk, as Dr. Vera said, like, say for instance, um, the technology director. There's all kinds of technology and other things that we would like to have, that would be good to have, that we'd offer, different things of that. They cost a ton of money. So what we do have discussions about is particularly with the general fund, if we know that, and I also have to look prospectively into the next year as well, because of school choice, which is kind of complicated. But anyway, um, that we would wait until the end of the year, where we knew all of our obligations were met, and until, even on the twenty-eighth. I mean, twenty-ninth, something could happen in June. But then you know, when I look at all of what, what we really do have left at the end of the year, say, I do feel very comfortable, say, with a balance. And they, oh, good, this is an opportunity. We can finally get those cafeteria tables for the primary school they've been waiting for, for, you know, the last four or five years. We would do that at the end of the year. We would not do it in, in the middle of, in the middle of the year, because I've got a whole, long time and a lot can happen between now and then. Just getting through the winter.
So we do know no more.
Correct. And the other
I'm sorry?
And you know, the other way to think about the carryover balance is, there's two, there's two entities that fund preschool. The general fund, which is what you have there, and then the revolving. So let's say next year, the cost to run the preschool is two hundred thousand dollars. By us carrying over sixty-one thousand dollars, we're only pulling a hundred and forty out of the general fund. If we lower that to, let's say, thirty thousand dollars, now we're pulling a hundred and seventy thousand dollars out of the general fund, which now means that's thirty thousand dollars that we need to fund the preschool. That's coming out of supplies, materials, salary, equipment. So
That's the reality.
So you kind of want that revolve, that carryover to get a little bit high. So then you're taking less money out of the general fund and not having to take money from other parts of the general fund to fund the, the preschool.
But you're not allowed to have revolving funds go too high as well, because the state will come after you, because you're not supposed to go. So it's a real balancing act. So when we go through this whole budget process, you'll see when we go through the FY23, you have, you look at things individually, but I also have to have holistically in my mind the whole entire time as well. It's a balancing act. And you also, you never know day-to-day what can happen. We've got four large, large buildings and you just don't know. And, you know, the bill has to be paid. I can't go to the town and say, hey, can you pay this bill for me? You know, so. But I'm glad we're holding our own. So now we're, we're moving on to the school lunch financial. So I'm just going to do a broad, because this is looking very well, because I don't want to steal the thunder of Raquel, who is going to be coming here. Raquel, I'm having to see her. She's our new food service director. We did introduce her back when she started. But she is going to be coming on January fifteenth to do a really nice presentation about all the things. So I do not want to steal any of her thunder. So I'm just going to do just a, a quick, you know, financial thing like I, I would normally do. But it's all, as you can see, looking at the numbers, very do, but it's all, as you can see, looking at the numbers, very good news, and I'll let her get the, the pleasure, because it was all her work and her doing, I can't take credit for any of it. So, that being said, a couple of things, just a reminder that this year, it's all free from the state. So we are strategically taking advantage of the fact that it is that way. So we have a lot more revenue coming in, as you can see, federal and state reimbursement, but of course, a lot less coming in for student fees. But the free lunches have been, you know, obviously increased, she's been doing breakfast, we'll let her talk about more about that later on. So the revenue is doing quite well. I do have the new cafeteria contract salaries in here with regard to the projections. You will see, and this is kind of hard to look at the past actuals, because as you know, particularly in FY '21, with regard to the salary lines and the food, I was funding quite a bit from, I believe it was $68,000 that we paid out of the general fund. So in looking at this, the revolving fund part, it's a little bit skewed because of that aspect of it. But we have been able to purchase some, some items that we've been needing for a number of years. She's also sought some grants, we should go over that later on. One other thing I want to bring to your attention is, you will see the line there, COVID funds, we did receive that revenue just because they just sending out funds so, for COVID, and so that was allowed to go in the revolving fund, so that helped as well. So as you can see down at the bottom, revenue over expenditures are predicted to be a good, healthy, over $31,000, and then the ending fund balance around $94,000 at this time.
Which is good news.
Yep, all good news, yep. But like I said, she's going to give you, I really want, I don't want to.
I know.
Steal her thunder, and she wants to do, she's going to do a wonderful presentation, she's doing wonderful things since she's been here. So, but does anyone have any, any questions?
I have a few questions. So the increase in food purchases, I assume that that's because of the larger number, like the larger participation and number of student meals.
It's a number of things.
Okay.
And that, I will, I'm going to let, well, both of us are going to, so it, you don't look, you can't really compare it, of course, to FY '21 and really '20 either.
I've got the other, I've got 19 and 18.
Okay, yep, yep, yep.
Everything I'm looking at is 19, 18, and 22.
Food costs have gone up quite a bit, and, you know, there's been delivery problems, and she's had to buy food from different places, it's just, it's been extremely, extremely difficult. But did you want to add some more about the, more of the nuances about the prices and cost of food?
Yeah, of course. So normally.
Did you want to, do you want to come up here, please, Raquel? Okay.
So normally, in a normal school year, the school's food service department would have access to USDA commodities and placing orders in August for September, you know, usually early September, you're getting basically, your basic groceries, like beef, cheese, pork, you know, tuna fish, fish sticks, you know, like the most basic groceries you're getting at the start of the year. We ain't get our most basic essentials until the end of October. So, you know, it's difficult for schools, and on top of that, you have the, the prices for basic groceries inflated incredibly, you know, milk, cheese, and imagine, like, you know, we're trying to just run a program, and our milk distributor doesn't have half and half, or like, the most basic groceries not even available, can't get. You know, we've had to apply for certain waivers, you know, just to cover ourselves on the nutritional requirements, just in case, you know, if anything were to happen and we couldn't get, you know, fat-free milk, could we get 1%, you know? So there's been a lot of juggling, you know? But overall, we've been very lucky that our staff are flexible and willing to, willing to go with the flow, and they've been doing a lot of scratch cooking, which has actually helped save a lot of food costs. As you know, making things in-house costs less than, you know, getting it manufactured and shipped across the country, so.
Yeah, it's been a little bit daunting for me, after, after Lisa left, all the emails were coming to me, and I've still been getting them, and it's been very disconcerting, I'm glad I'm not the food service director, but every single day, getting emails from Thurston and Gordon and other places saying, I'm sorry, but we are delaying your deliveries another week, another two weeks, every day. So one of the things that she did contact me about too, is that we have Hanniford's line of credit, that the consumer science program, that's the only program they ever used, it was here. So she called me to see if, if we could get the amount increase, and she could use it as well. And I thought that was going to be a daunting process, because I even forget what state I had to call. They did it in like three minutes for me. So she was able to, I was able, three minutes, it was actually recorded at the store, she went to the store and got food. That's how it's been. So it worked out great that, you know, because you know how things are these days, trying to get things done, so it worked out great.
Who's that, that famous guy that's on TV, that used to be on TV, and he talked about, like, going into the schools and making, and do scratch cooking? It was the first thing that came to my mind when you said that, so that's actually, I'm actually kind of excited that you guys are doing from scratch cooking, I don't know how, what a pain it might be, but as a parent, I like hearing that instead of the processed food that we provide.
Of course, yeah, so, I mean, and I'll talk more about this at our next meeting, but, you know, I'm very passionate about school nutrition and food and farming and local, you know, eating in season and mass farm to school, so, you know, it's exciting to be in Douglas, and we'll have a lot of fun projects coming up.
Oh, I'm excited, because last year, they would give you like free, we, my, in our family, the joke was free food Friday, basically, and like, you'd bring home food for, you know, certain days. So as a parent, I got to see what my kids are eating, and I was pretty like, wow, I didn't know. So I'm very excited to see what you have to say, so.
So.
I think you're going to be very pleased.
All right, I want to put you on the spot one more time, and I, the end balance is fantastic, and I'm, my kids are super excited about Shine, so don't take this, I'm just going to nitpick, because I feel like it's my responsibility a little bit. And then, so for the food service supplies and office supplies, like, that's a decent uptick, is that just sort of like, things were out of date, and we have this influx of funding, could you talk a little bit about?
Yeah, of course, so, you know, and Courtney, if it's okay, you know, one of the main focuses on increasing our participation is so that we can fund, you know, replacements and repairs of basic, and I'm talking basic essential, you know, supplies and equipment, where, you know, I always see myself as an auditor from the Department of Education, if I were to come in and inspect our program, like, are we using the right portion utensils? Is the equipment up to date? Where the board of health passes? You know, I'm always looking like, worst-case scenario, would we pass, you know, certain criteria? And, you know, there were a lot of things that needed to be updated, and I can totally understand if it wasn't affordable in the past, but we do have the advantage this year where we're being reimbursed under like a summer food service rate, which is higher than the national school breakfast and lunch rate. So between that, the meals being available free and promotion of breakfast, thankfully, you know, with our school administrators, it's really helped us fund some of these replacements and repairs that we desperately needed.
Yeah, that's fantastic. I just, I think the question's worth asking, because I know we had money come in that helped us with some tech that was, I mean, we'd had Donna Souza come in here and talk to us about a three, five-year plan of technology, and it was like, how are we ever going to catch up?
Thank you.
And we were able to, it wasn't like bonus Chromebooks, it was necessary, so it's really nice to hear, you know, because, and this is why I asked the question, you look at the number, it's like, well, why is it 10K more or something? Not only is that money coming in, but it's helpful to hear you express, like, this is, it was a need, you know?
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely.
Thank you.
And I'd like to give kudos to Raquel as well, I mean, she's really in the buildings, looking at, you know, what the staff really need to do their job.